Good evening. Workshop council meeting for the city of Copper's Cove held December 2nd, 2025 is called at order at 5:45 PM. Mayor and Secretary Kaul Roll.
Mayor Yancey.
Here.
Christina Strophas.
Here.
Rita Hogan.
Here.
Howard Hawk.
Here.
John Hale.
Here.
Del Tredway.
Here.
Fanya Hart.
Here.
Jack Smith.
Here.
Okay. Everyone's present. Item C announcements.
None for me, Mr. Mayor.
None for me, sir.
None for me, sir.
None, sir.
Okay.
I have none at this time, sir.
Nothing, sir.
Fanya?
I have nothing.
You have nothing?
Whitney.
Jack?
Make sure everyone gets out to Kris Kendall Mart this weekend.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. All right. We move to item D, public recognition.
Item one, Employee Service Awards, December 2025. Ryan Havilas, City Manager.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilson. Mayor and council, it's our first meeting and only meeting this month. So don't show up in two weeks, mayor and council. We're not having another meeting. But we get to recognize our amazing team members this evening, and we are going to start with Yanina Scott, who is celebrating five years of service with the Utility Administration Department. She is currently our billing supervisor. So Yanina began her career with the city of Copper's Cove on December 21, 2020, joining the Utility Administration Department as a billing technician. She promoted to billing supervisor in March of 2023 and has continued to serve the city and our community with steady dedication, which is very important. Yanina is widely regarded as the department's go-to, go-to expert. Wow. Did you write that, Millie?
No.
You didn't write that.
But she is.
We're gonna find out who wrote it. Go-to expert for complex account matters. Her strong organizational skills, consistency, and commitment to continuous learning have elevated the entire utility administration team. She plays an instrumental role in implementing rate increase updates within N-Code following fee schedule changes, and she has ensured on-time, accurate billing across all cycles, a major accomplishment that reflects her diligence and leadership. Her supervisors shared that Yanina excels in her position as billing supervisor and is instrumental in helping to train all employees in the department. Thank you, Yanina, for your great five years, especially during the transition that you came in on. You've really made the department stand out. Thank you so much for your service. And next, we celebrate with Caleb Linville, Drainage Supervisor with our Drainage Department, celebrating five years of service also. Caleb began his career with the city of Copper's Cove on December 14, 2020, as a light equipment operator, herbicide crack sealer. And that's like three jobs crammed into one. In the Street Department, he quickly promoted to Drainage Supervisor in December of 2022, where he has continued to serve both the city and our community with steadfast dedication. In his role, Caleb oversees repairs and maintenance of the city's drainage system and various assigned equipment to handle the task, ensuring the system remains operational and meet required standards. He also assists in overseeing the municipal separate storm sewer system. We call it MS4, if you've heard us talk about it in other items. His growing accuracy, sound decision-making, and adherence to policy have strengthened departmental operations and allowed additional responsibilities to be entrusted to him. Caleb consistently demonstrates professionalism and meaningful respect toward the citizens of Copper's Cove and fellow team members. His supervisor shared that Caleb can be counted on to complete his task, and he has the respect of his team. Thank you, Caleb, for an amazing five years of service with our city. I know I've seen you out at many emergencies after hours, so thank you also for sharing your time to our citizens. Next, we celebrate with Bobby McAdoo Jr., celebrating five years of service with our wastewater treatment department. Bobby joined the city of Copper's Cove on December 14, 2020, as an operator in the wastewater treatment department, where he continues to serve our city and community with dedication at the south plant. He maintains his TCQ wastewater certification and CDL license and demonstrates a strong understanding of all aspects of his role. Bobby has relied upon his sound judgment regarding mechanical issues at the plant and has proven, has the proven ability to identify potential issues before they escalate. He actively supports and instructs others working at the facility, begins each day engaged and prepared, and completes his weekly responsibilities on time and with care. His supervisor shared, "I feel comfortable and can rely on Bobby when I have to leave the plant." He is very good at explaining to our newest employee what he is doing when working on mechanical issues. Bobby, thank you for your dedication and service to our city and community. Next, I can't believe it's only been five years. Next, we celebrate with Daniel Demers II. I didn't know you were the second. That is great. Celebrating five years of service. And I gotta say, Daniel is just a guy that's everywhere, so it doesn't feel like it's only been for five years. Daniel began his career with the city of Copper's Cove team on December 7, 2020, as a laborer in the Parks and Recreation Department. He quickly promoted to maintenance technician in September of 2022, and most recently again to maintenance supervisor in June of 2024, where he continues to serve. Daniel has steadily expanded his knowledge of departmental policies and daily operations, reflecting a strong commitment to professional growth. He has also strengthened his skills in managing the department's budget, ensuring resources are used effectively and efficiently while maintaining high standards of care throughout our parks system and our facilities. His perspective has broadened considerably not only what is best for his department, but also what benefits the city as a whole and the citizens we serve. Daniel has the distinct opportunity to work with various departments on various projects, and he has, and is appreciated by all. And we'll talk about that in just a moment. In his spare time, Daniel attended and graduated from the city's Development and Leadership Academy. What spare time? Oh, we're gonna have to talk about that. His supervisor stated that Daniel is "an exceptionally reliable colleague, consistently demonstrating his ability to provide clear and appropriate guidance to all team members when I am unavailable." And I gotta say, mayor and council, that Daniel is, I don't wanna say he's a jack-of-all-trades, but he knows so much. There are a number of facility improvements that we have. When you walk into City Hall at the city secretary's and city manager's office, that entire lobby was part of Daniel's guidance and direction to make that happen, and that is through several other departments throughout the city. So Daniel, it's been a very short, but seems like a very long five years. Thank you for your service to our city and community. And next, mayor and council, we celebrate with Christopher Weck, who is a heavy equipment operator with a solid waste department, celebrating five years of service. Chris began his career with the city of Copper's Cove on December 7, 2020, as a laborer in the solid waste department. He promoted to heavy equipment operator in March 2023, where he continues to serve to the, to date. Chris demonstrates thorough knowledge of his duties, including cleaning the facility, operating heavy equipment such as the front-end loader, yard mule, backhoe, skid steer, and crane, delivering dumpsters, training new employees, and maintaining the transfer station grounds. He performs routine vehicle and equipment maintenance, operates safely and consistently, adheres to the facility's policies and procedures. He is courteous and professional in both his mannerisms, which benefit the citizens, our customers, and coworkers alike. His supervisor stated, "Chris's experience operating the transfer station is a great asset. He possesses a strong understanding of daily operations and has significantly contributed to the efficiency and effectiveness of the facility." Chris, thank you for your five years of dedicated service to our city and our community. Mayor and council, that concludes our presentations this evening.
Thank you, Ryan. There are no workshop items for this evening, so the time is 5:55. We will adjourn and begin the regular meeting at six o'clock. And we wait again. And we wait again.
Ryan.
Good evening. The regular council meeting for the City of Copper's Cove, held December 2, 2025, is called to order at 6 o'clock. Madam Secretary, will you please call the roll?
Mayor, the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance first.
Oh. Let me look at this a little closer. It says, "Call to order, we're called to order." And now, the invocation by Ms. Hart, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
If you could, please bow with me in prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day. Continue just to watch over our families, and thank you for watching over us every single day and the continued grace that you show us. We ask that you watch over our first responders and our families, and watch over the decisions that we make on the council that are so crucial in determining the goings-on for the cities. And thank you, again, for everything that you bless us with. In Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge for nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And to the state flag.
I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Please be seated. Now, Madam Secretary, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Yancey.
Here.
Christina Strophas.
Here.
Rita Hogan.
Here.
Howard Hawk.
Here.
John Hale.
Here.
Del Tredway.
Here.
Fanya Hart.
Here.
Jack Smith.
Here.
All right. Item D, announcements.
None for me, Mr. Mayor.
None for me, sir.
No, Mr. Mayor. Yes, sir.
Yes.
I have some announcements.
Okay.
This Friday at, excuse me, let me back up. This Friday, yeah, this Friday at 6:00 PM at Santa Fe Parking Lot, which is the parking lot downtown, right next to the railroad tracks. We will be having the Christmas Tree Lighting Ceremony as part of the Chris Kendall Mart. The following week, on December 9, at 6:00 PM, the city will be hosting the First Christmas in the Park at City Park. And please come out and enjoy the new walking trail around the pond, as well as the Christmas decorations that will be out there also. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ryan.
I have no thanks, sir, thank you. Not to Mr. Mayor.
I don't have anything, Mr. Mayor.
Jack.
Just to add on to what Ryan had spoke about, Chris Kendall Mart is this weekend, December 5 through 7, in downtown Copper's Cove. There will be a parade on December 6, a lighted Christmas parade at 6:00 PM going down Avenue D. There is live music, food trucks, fun, and contests all weekend. So come out and enjoy Chris Kendall Mart in downtown Copper's Cove. Tree lighting ceremony, as you said, is Friday evening.
Mayor, I do have one more, I apologize.
Go ahead.
On December 8, at 7:00 PM, if you wanna come watch, the Copper's Cove Police Department challenge the Lady Dogs volleyball team. That's occurring at the Copper's Cove High School in the main gym, 7:00 PM. It is a donation event, so bring goods for donation as part of that. It's a fundraiser, so thank you.
All right, we move to item E, Citizens Forum.
At this time, citizens will be allowed to speak for a length of time not to exceed five minutes per person on any item which is listed on the agenda and items not listed on the agenda. Thirty minutes total has been allotted for this section. Pursuant to Section 551.042 of the Texas Open Meetings Act, any deliberation or decision about the subject of inquiry which is not listed on the agenda shall be limited to a proposal to place the subject on the agenda for a subsequent meeting.
All right, is there anyone to speak during Citizens Forum?
He said to try again, George.
Is it's work? Okay. George McMaster, 1101 Magnolia Avenue. From the 2008 ruling in Lowenberg v. Dallas, though the city is a home rule municipal corporation with broad powers of city government, citing Gates v. City of Dallas, 1986, and Articles 11, Section 5 of the Texas Constitution, it cannot impose regulatory fees that are really taxes prohibited by the Constitution. Based on arguments given to me by an anonymous source, anonymous source, I make the following. The street maintenance fund by public appearances is meant to raise revenue for the maintenance of city streets. Its calculations are based on property classification, square footage, and the predicted amount of trips each business receives in any given period of time, and not based on the regulatory costs of maintaining city streets. The calculations and the fees imposed per those calculations appear to be more of an ad valorem tax that was not lawfully imposed in accordance with the laws of imposing such. In regards to an occupation tax argument, I base this off Builder Recovery Services LLC v. Leslake. The aforementioned 2008 ruling in Lowenberg v. Dallas, in Attorney General opinion, Juliette Mike, 338, Jim Maddox, Beck, I think 1982, I don't remember the exact date, but issued under Attorney General Jim Maddox, any fee meant to raise revenue is a tax regardless of how you present it, as the businesses of this city are required to pay a tiered fee based on the type of business and the amount of business they conduct according to these trip calculations. It appears this fee is not a regulatory fee meant to offset street maintenance costs, but an occupation tax meant to raise revenue that is prohibited under Article 8, Section 1, Subsection Foxtrot of the Texas Constitution. Now, I checked the city charter if there was any taxing authority to begin with on this one. The city's taxing authority per Section 9.01 of the charter comes from the state constitution and the general laws of this state. There is no provision for this tax, for this program, to be a tax under any provision of the charter. I looked. There is a manner and method to imposing ad valorem taxes under the constitution and state law. That was not done here. There is a manner and method to imposing a street maintenance charge via sales taxes under state law. That was done previously by the city. I don't remember exactly when, but I know it was done by the city a few years ago. But it wasn't done here. It has long been held under municipal occupation taxes are unconstitutional. Unfortunately, it could be argued that this program is a violation of a permission provision. Because the street maintenance fund imposes a revenue-generating tax than a fee to offset the regulatory cost of maintaining city streets, state tax law and court precedent do not give a favorable light to this whole thing. As such, it is reasonable for me and anybody else interested to conclude that there was no authorization under the city charter, state law, or even from the voters of Copper's Cove to enact such a tax, and the business portion of this program could be considered an illegal occupation tax. I urge city council to direct city staff not to enforce this thing as a tax and to repeal it as soon as possible. I also urge council, should it desire to do so in the future, to lawfully impose such a tax, provided the tax itself is in compliance with Texas law and the Texas constitution.
All right, anyone else to speak during Citizens Forum?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Jeffrey Burke. I'm a citizen of Colleen. Here about the ban that I received from Hills of Cove Golf Course. To let you, I would rather just read this. I've sent both the email to the city manager and to you, Mr. Mayor, and with no response yet. I am right to formally dispute the appeal and ban that recently was placed on me at the Hills of Cove Golf Course. I have played at this course for over seventeen years with the same group, have never had any issues at the course. I haven't been notified verbally or in writing that I was banned. The first time I was told of any such ban was during a phone call that I received 19 November 25 from the course manager, Tyler Morrison, saying that I was no longer allowed, not banned, no longer allowed to play at the course, per Jeff Star. No written notice was provided, no explanation was given, and no due process was offered. This lack of notice and procedures inconsistent with city policy and with the requirements for restricting a citizen's access to public facility. The incident involving the golf cart occurred almost a year ago. I believe it's over a year now. Your city pressed charges. I turned myself in to be arrested for backing into a golf cart. I gave my statement to the police. I spent four hours in a cell. The district attorney dismissed the case. No charges, no violations. I played at the course three different times with my buddies, some of them here tonight, that I've played with for almost eighteen years on Veterans Day. I am a veteran with forty years, both as in service and as a DOD civilian. This severity of this is, I know, is not right. No one contacted me, no one talked to me. I know that I made a mistake. I backed into that golf cart, and I made a horrible decision because I didn't see the severe, there was no severe damage to the golf cart. I snapped the front back on. I was late for a date, and that's not an excuse. But I was signed for the golf cart. As per the golf cart rules on the deal, that I'm responsible for any damage found on that golf cart. The next morning, I wasn't contacted by the golf course or the manager. I was contacted by a friend that I was due to play there the next morning. They said they were banned from the golf course and could not play because I had hit a golf cart. And I said, "Yes, I have, and I'm on my way there." I got there, the police showed up, I gave a statement, and I was told that I wasn't allowed to play anymore. And I begged the course to allow my friends to play because they had nothing to do with it. And finally, I guess they got the release to play, and I went home, quite upset that with myself and that I had to talk to police over backing into a golf cart. It's very troubling that I was looking for the future of maybe buying a home in Cove and that being my home course. Today, that is not the case. And I will finish this statement with, "I am therefore requesting immediate review and reversal of this ban. A copy of written policy used to justify banning a citizen from a public golf course. A copy of all records, emails, notes, and internal communications that include my name or the playing partners that I play with. The cart incident corresponds involving my name, of course, a meeting with you guys. The administration is assured that this is handled fairly, and that's all I want. I've played at this course, I've had these friends forever, we served together, and I boycotted after I was arrested and didn't play there for a year. And the only reason I came back for Veterans Day is because of my friends. And I think that's very important to all of us. And I, this is a formal request under Freedom of Information Act, Public Records Act, for all documentation required regarding this matter. I look forward to your timely response. Thank you very much."
All right, anyone else to speak during Citizens Forum?
Good evening, Mayor, and good evening, City Council. I just wanted, I'm a representative of WBW, and I wanted to just introduce myself. My name is Tara for our action item H4. And we just wanted to let you know that we heard your concerns last week. And instead of trying this out over months and months of negotiation and stuff, we just decided to go with what was suggested at the 0% for the CCN transfer fee. We wanted the city to feel comfortable with us, and we wanna start this project off on a good foot. So if you have any questions for me afterwards, or let me know.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak during Citizens Forum? All right, we will close Citizens Forum and move to item F, Consent Agenda.
All matters listed under this item are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Item 1, consideration and action on approval of city council's strategic planning session meeting minutes for November 14, 2025, Lisa Wilson, City Secretary. Item 2, consideration and action on approval of city council workshop meeting minutes for November 18, 2025, Lisa Wilson, City Secretary. Item 3, consideration and action on approval of city council regular meeting minutes for November 18, 2025, Lisa Wilson, City Secretary. Item 4, consideration and action on ordinance number 2025-41, amending the personnel improvement plan for FY 2026-2030 and the position listing for FY 2025-26, Ariana Beckman, Director of Budget. Item 5, consideration and action on approval of ordinance number 2025-42, amending the fiscal year 2025-2026 budget for the City of Copper's Cove, Ariana Beckman, Director of Budget.
Thank you, Lisa. Council, is there any item you wish to pull and consider separately? All right, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve consent agenda item F1 through 5.
Second.
Motion being by Mr. Hawk, signed by Fanya. Okay. All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We move to item G, Public Hearings in Action.
A governmental body shall allow each member of the public who desires to address the body regarding an item on an agenda for an open meeting of the body to address the body regarding the item at the meeting before or during the body's consideration of the item. Item 1, public hearing in action on ordinance number 2025-43 to amend the future land use plan by Raydon Clayton and D Bar C Holdings LP from retail to residential land use for Landpasses County property IDs 8956 and a portion of 8949, consisting of 10.73 acres, generally located at 1624 West US Highway 190, Copper's Cove, Texas, Bobby Lewis, Development Services Director.
Thank you. The time is 6:18 for this public hearing matter.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Over the past several months, the applicant has experienced difficulty with selling their home to potential buyers as lenders are not, will not loan funds to secure a mortgage to purchase the property as a single-family home due to the commercial land use and zoning currently in place on the property. The reason for this request is to align the existing land use, which is residential, by amending the future land use plan map from retail, retail, commercial to low-density residential land use to allow the applicant an opportunity to sell their property to a potential buyer that needs to secure a mortgage for the purchase of the single-family home. On November 24, 2025, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted 4 to 2 to recommend approval to the city council to amend the future land use plan map from retail, retail, commercial to low-density residential land use. With that, city staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval of ordinance number 2025-43 as requested.
All right. Thank you, Bobby. Is there questions, counsel for Bobby? All right, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on this public hearing matter?
Hello. George McMaster, 1101 Magnolia Avenue. I support it, and I get there's a regulatory need for a public hearing and all this other one, but sometimes maybe it's a bit much. And it's not a specific criticism of the thing, I was just like, maybe a logical, from a logical standpoint. Just let it happen. But yes, I do understand there's a point to it, but yes, I do support it.
Anyone else to speak on this public hearing G1 matter? All right, we will close the public hearing at six twenty one. Counselors, there action to be taken on this?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve item G one, um, ordinance number two zero two five, that's four to three.
I'll second.
Motion made by Mr. Hogs, second by Ms. Hogan. Counsel, any questions? All right, hearing done, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, we move to item G two.
Public hearing in action to approve ordinance number twenty twenty five dash forty four to rezone property by Raydon Clayton from HC to District to RE District for Lampasses County property ID eighty nine fifty six consisting of one point eight three four acres and D Bar C Holdings LP from HC District to AG District for a portion of Lampasses County property ID eighty, eighty nine forty nine consisting of eight point eight nine six acres generally located at sixteen twenty four West US Highway one ninety, Copper's Cove, Texas. Bobby Lewis, Development Services Director.
All right, thank you, the time is six twenty two for a public hearing, item G two.
Mayor and Council, the applicant's property located at sixteen twenty four West US Highway one ninety is a single family residence having an incompatible high commercial zoning district. The reason for this request is to align the existing land use and to rezone the property to allow the applicant an opportunity to sell their property to a potential buyer. On November twenty fourth, twenty twenty five, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted four to two to recommend approval to the city council to rezone the property from HC Heavy Commercial District to RE Rural Estates District. With that, city staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval of ordinance number twenty twenty five dash forty four as requested.
All right, counsel, we have questions for Mr. Lewis. All right, is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this public hearing matter?
George McMaster, eleven one Magnolia, again. Just for consistency's sake, I support it.
Anyone else to speak? All right, the time is six twenty three, we'll close the public hearing. Counsel, we have any action to be taken on this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, recommend approval of ordinance twenty twenty five dash forty four.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Treadway, second by Mr. Hale. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. All right, that concludes the public hearing matters, we move to item H, action items.
Item one, quarterly activity report for the Heart of Texas Defense Alliance. Keith Sled, Executive Director of the Heart of Texas Defense Alliance.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Manager and Staff. I hope you all had a great Thanksgiving and I want to wish you Merry Christmas, everybody. I don't know, I'll see you again before Christmas, but
See you next year.
But I hope you all had a chance to relax and spend some time with your friends and your family. So, uh, this is just a list of projects we're working on, I'll talk about a few of them. These are the updates for you. Uh, back in November, the Army formally announced, uh, a program called Project Janus that will place small modular nuclear reactors on key military installations for energy resiliency. Now, these, when I say small, these are twenty megawatt and below. So Fort Hood's average daily requirement's about thirty five megawatts. So it's be backup power for the installation. You'll see the list of the nine installations are not in any priority, that's just they're alphabetically listed up there. Of the ones that are being considered, they'll make a decision on who's going to get the first ones between now and the spring and in the spring they'll make the site selection announcements. Uh, it is a good thing, the twenty megawatt reactors are about the size of a semi truck. They're not large, they generate no nuclear waste. What happens is they run three to five years and then you pull that trailer out and put a new one in. Or you could, if you needed more power, you could stack another one beside it, hook them up in series and so on. Uh, what it does do for the community is, in a time of, think back to when, uh, Yuri happened, what, five years ago now, or four years ago now, I guess. Uh, the power grid has a limited amount of power. Fort Hood is one of the prime power locations, it will get power for key facilities like hospitals will as well. If they had something like this then, twenty megawatts of that demand could be offset and allowed to go into the communities versus being required for those power, prime power sites. Uh, these are, it's new technology, it is not the technology we've seen in the past that build the large nuclear power plants you've seen in a couple of places in Texas around the state, the US. Uh, there's a lot of different, there's five, I think, different designs, eight different companies are competing. The Navy has operated small modular reactors since nineteen fifty four when they built the USS Nautilus. And they've operated hundreds of them since then on ships, never had a failure. Uh, so these are not what you think of when you think of some of the larger plans. The project call sheet's up there, if anybody wants to pull it up and read about what it's supposed to do. Could be a good thing for the community in that it may bring new technology to the area. Also may bring some new businesses who want to see how this works and what they can do with it. Uh, these are also proposed for use with future AI data centers as they are built to reduce demand on the commercial power grid versus having to, they're pretty high demand. So it's just a update for you, we'll let you know as more of this comes out. Uh, but it has a great potential for it. The second I want to bring up to you and I'll show you a map in just a minute is, uh, the enhanced use lease. The Army asked, oh, DOD asked all installations, and so the Army asked Fort Hood to identify and report potential areas for enhanced use leases. Now, enhanced use leases are sort of unique, uh, to government facilities. Uh, DOD can do them for short term or long term and essentially what it is, you have to reimburse for the full market value of that in either money or in services you provide to the installations. So it's a direct benefit to the installations. Fort identified five areas that they thought would be potential. Well, I may not be able to get the map to work. Let's see if we'll go down to the map. Okay, there we go. So you can see these five areas up there, you'll see two on either side of Highway nine. The hundred twenty four acres on the west side, the two hundred and seven acres on the east side. Uh, the sixty nine acres on north of Highway fourteen, or I fourteen. Uh, and some a little further over by Clear Creek. And then you'll see the other two places that are on the south side of I fourteen that are in red there. Uh, we don't know what will happen with these. They just had to identify the areas, DOD will then go back and see if they can, anyone that's interested in leasing these, it's a drawn out process to do it. One potential use would be for AI data centers. Uh, at the conference that, uh, the city manager and Fred Welch and I were at in end of October in Monterey for the Associated Defense Communities. One proposal is to put data centers on military installations so they are secure. Uh, they have a footprint that, not as large as those acreages you see up there, but they have a pretty significant footprint and they have a large requirement in power and water. Uh, we don't know if that will come, but it does have the potential if a company wanted to do this, because they're responsible for all development of it, it's not funded by the federal government. But I just want to make you aware of these areas. The potential multimodal site, the two sites that it came down to is the two hundred and seven acres on the east side of Highway nine and hundred twenty four acres on the west side of Highway nine. So some of it could be, who gets there first to a degree? Uh, we don't know how long or how quickly the, if a data center wanted to come, would be before it would even begin to do this. This just happened in the last month and we haven't heard anything else about it recently. So, but if I do hear more, I will let you know.
Hey Keith.
Yes.
My first thought is that hundred and twenty four acres on the west side of Highway nine is been identified for years for a potential land swap with Fort Hood. How is this going to affect that?
If they had an enhanced use lease, I don't know, they could do the land swap.
They couldn't do it then.
Now, if they got one of the other sides.
Are they going to take it off the table now?
No, it's still, it's in the congressional, it's in the law, so there'll have to be some changes made.
Okay.
To go that way. I think if they did something, it'd either be the sixty nine acres or the two hundred, they could do the sixty eight acres too, although that's not as secure a location, but uh, the two hundred and seven acre site or the sixty nine acre site would probably be one. I don't know how much land the data center needs. It's a more vertical construction than it is horizontal. Uh, they're building some over in Clean now, we'll see where they, you know, it'll be an idea to see what they do with those. So, I, that's one reason I don't know if they would go for the hundred twenty four acres is because of that requirement. Because then you'd have to amend the, the National Defense Authorization Act that was done back in twenty seventeen, I think, if I remember right. To fit, to make that adjustment. Any other questions about that? That's all. Okay. Uh, the AI data centers, there's a little bit of them here, it's another presidential executive order. They want to protect them because of the potential for to be targeted or also to be, uh, to get access to them for other purposes. The RFPs will come out, request for proposals will come out for these in the spring of twenty twenty six. And then that'll be the best indication of if anybody's interested in doing something in this area here or not. Uh, anyone that says land lease, that would be an enhanced use lease. Uh, if, was it Fort Hood, one of those potential areas that we identified. For FY twenty six budget, we did get a continuing resolution that funds government through the, not quite the end of January, but almost the end of January, on thirty January. There were three of the traditional twelve appropriation bills passed as part of that. The Military and Veterans Affairs, Military Construction, Agricultural Bill, and Legislative Brains Bill, which funds actual government operations. Uh, and the Milcom Bill, there is money for another motor pool for Fort Hood that Congressman Carter was able to work on. So we do appreciate him doing that. Uh, the reason that's important is the motor pools of Fort Hood that house, especially for armored vehicles like the M one tank or M two Bradley were built back in the fifties and sixties for three generations of vehicles older. And they don't fit, so you can't pull an M one tank into the motor pool bay to work on it. You work on it outside in the sun, under sun shades traditionally. So these are going to be designed to actually work on this kind of equipment, make it easier for the soldiers to maintain the equipment more efficient. Uh, the National Defense Authorization Act, there's a good chance it will be passed before the Christmas break. They're in agreement, uh, both the House and Senate on the bills, and it's in a conference committee now. Uh, the biggest issue that's on the work is what's called the right to repair. In the past, DOD has not always had the ability to do, to get proprietary data for the right to repair vehicles. Uh, they are now making the case that they want that. Uh, and so both bills include right to repair, it's just they do it in different ways and so that's what they're haggling about now. So hopefully we'll have some movement on the bill in the next week. Uh, when it does pass, it does include a three point eight percent pay raise for soldiers or, and all service members. A three point nine percent increase in BAH will come out between two and six percent depending on what location you're at at that point in time. We have not seen the new rate, so I can't tell you how much Fort Hood's BAH rate would increase. And then a three point four percent increase in the basic allowance for subsistence. Notably, the Army in strength increases by almost twelve thousand soldiers in this NDAA which has gone down the last two previous years and that's a direct result of the improvements in recruiting. So, which is good news, because we've been below authorizations at Fort Hood for almost three years now. In fact, uh, on the assigned, if you look at the fast facts, has gone up, uh, the last few months. Which is good news. And it'll take a little while for them, most of those soldiers come in in the summer because they graduate high school or whatever program they're in and then enlist to come in after, sometime after that. Uh, one other note I would bring up to you is the I fourteen expansion from Copper's Cove to Lomita is currently out for public comment. There's a first of three series, started first one last night and there's two more sessions, one in Lampasses and one in Lomita over the next couple of weeks. Uh, there's a website you can go to if you want to see the route, there's not, tons of information on there, it just kind of shows proposed routes and allows public comment to be made about the potential impacts from those routes. Uh, there's another series of hearings that will go on in the spring and another one I want to say in the fall. This project is still four to five years out from design and then probably ten or more years out from construction starting, at least at this point. There's no funding committed to the actual construction yet, so. But it, it's good news at least they're looking to this. And this is run by the Brownwood District, not by the Waco District, which does most of the stuff from kind of the west side of Copper's Cove going back to the east. Now, the Fort Hood fast facts there, you'll see the thirty two thousand nine hundred soldiers. Uh, we have been down into the thirty one thousand level for a period of time, you can see it starting to climb, which is good news. Deployments numbers did go up as third brigade is deployed currently over to Europe. Uh, only went up about six hundred additional soldiers this month and then about one point nine percent overall. So, subject to any questions you have, that's all I have for you this evening.
Counsel, any questions? Thank you, Keith.
Y'all have a Merry Christmas.
And a Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Move to item H two.
Consideration and action on resolution number twenty twenty five dash thirty. Casting votes for candidates to serve on the Corial Central Appraisal District Board of Directors. Ariana Beckman, Director of Budget.
Thank you, Lisa, uh, good evening, Council, Mayor, uh, City Manager. Uh, the Corial Central Appraisal District has provided four nominees for appointment to its, uh, Board of Directors for twenty twenty six, twenty twenty nine term. Uh, those nominees are Fred Chavez, Inez Faison, Kevin George and Councilman Dale Treadway. The city of Copper's Cove has been allocated four hundred and twenty votes for this election. Uh, you can distribute these votes to one or up to four candidates in any combination, but you cannot exceed four individuals. Uh, one important factor to, uh, remember is that a total of six hundred and sixty seven votes is required uh, to ensure nominees placement on the Corial CAD's Board of Directors. As we do, as we have done in previous years, we do coordinate with, uh, Copper's Cove Independent School District and we were notified that they have casted four hundred twenty four votes, which is the allocated votes for the school district for Inez Faison. So following this allocation, Ms. Faison is currently two hundred and eleven votes short of the threshold that is needed for her placement on the board. If the city council chooses to support her appointment, you can apply two hundred and nine votes. Uh, and that will secure her position and that will, uh, leave um, the remaining votes for allocation to other nominees. Uh, the city is required to formalize its ballot by resolution and submit it to the Corial CAD by December fifteen, twenty twenty five. So staff's recommendation is that council cast their votes and approve attached to resolution electing candidates to serve on the Corial CAD Board.
Okay, question, if don't cast enough votes for Ms. Faison, then the possibility exists that no representative from Cove would be on the appraisal district.
So what was your question again?
Is, is that, am I saying that right? Possibility exists that we wouldn't have anybody?
Yes.
Jay?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Uh, there's only four people on the ballot and three of them are from Copper's Cove. And, um, I think they also, this Central Texas College cast votes, uh, fifty percent for Dale Treadway and fifty percent for Inez Faison, I've been told. I don't know how many votes those are though.
May I? That is correct, uh, I did listen to their meeting, they were allocated six, sixty four votes total. So thirty two were allocated for Ms. Inez Faison and the remainder thirty two for, um, Fred Chavez.
Fred Chavez?
Fred Chavez or Dale Treadway?
Fred Chavez, at the last minute they changed their voting.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So with those two entities combined, Ms. Faison needs, uh, two hundred and nine votes to be placed on the, on their board.
Mayor.
Yes.
Uh, Mrs. Beckman, can you also share what Corial County and Gatesville ISD, how they cast their votes as well?
Yes.
Because I think that'll really help council make a quick decision.
Yes, so Corial County, uh, did five hundred and eighty four votes for Kevin George. And then Gatesville ISD added another two hundred and ninety one votes for, uh, Mr. George. And then Ms. Faison, she got the four hundred and twenty four votes from CCISD, thirty two votes from CTC. And then Mr. Chavez got the thirty two votes from CC, from CTC. And that's all of the entities, I believe.
Yeah, so Mayor and Council, um, I mean, Kevin George is going to be on as a Board of Director. And, uh, even if you cast all of your votes, just in, in theory, to Fred Chavez, because he's kind of the underdog at this point. Inez Faison will still be the other Board of Director. And so I, I think, I think your action is pretty easy because you're the last organization to cast votes at this point.
Is Kevin, is he, uh, Copper's Cove?
Gatesville.
Gatesville, okay, that's what I thought, okay. All right. So counsel, there's four hundred and fifty six votes cast for Inez Faison. And six sixty seven is the magic number. to elect somebody. Four, four, five, six.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
That's just to guarantee that they're elected, but they could be elected with 424 votes also, if that's the most votes.
So it's the top three vote getters?
Yes.
Mayor, no, it's only two positions. Only two positions will be elected in this voting process.
Only two, not three?
Only two positions.
Okay.
Are available.
So, and Mr. George already one of them.
Yes.
Okay. All right, Counsel. If I, if I'm understanding correctly, it takes 211 votes to ensure Ms. Faison gets, is on the appraisal district that represents Copper's Cove. Am I reading, am I saying that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we allocate 211 of our votes to Inez Faison and the remainder to Fred Chavez.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Smith, said by who? Dale? Okay. Any other comments, questions? So how many, how many votes is that for Fred?
So.
Less than what is needed. Less than what is needed to be guaranteed.
Two, four, nine.
Two, okay. All right. Any other questions? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item H3.
Consideration and action on resolution number 2025-31. Casting votes for candidates to serve on the Lampasses Central Appraisal District Board of Directors. Arianna Beckman, Director of Budget.
Thank you, Lisa. Again, the Lampasses Central Appraisal District has provided five nominees for appointment to its Board of Directors. Their term, it's a two-year term though, 2026 through 27. Those nominees include David Barclay, Marshall Brewer, Steve Cook, Philip Garrett, and Chris Harrison. The City of Cove has been allocated a total of 162 votes for this election. You can distribute these votes to one or up to five candidates. We are required to formalize the ballot by resolution and submit it to the Lampasses CAD by December 16, 2025. Staff's recommendation is that council cast their votes and approved, and approve attached resolution, electing candidates to serve on the Lampasses CAD boards.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Okay.
Are any of these individuals from Copper's Cove? Does anybody know?
I don't believe so.
No, I don't think so either. So there, there would not be a representative from Cove on the Lampasses Board? So, do we have, has any, anybody else been voted on? Do you know?
I don't know.
I'm sorry, what was your question, Mayor?
Has, has any other entities already voted?
I don't know.
Okay. So it's basically a scatter shot. Take your 162 and divide them up for one or two people. Personally, I do not know any of them, so I couldn't tell you one way or the other.
Mr. Mayor, I'm fine with dividing them evenly among all the candidates.
Okay.
Which, I know it won't come out exactly even, but Ryan can do the math.
Thank you.
I'll second that. And the odd vote go to, to matter, David Barclay, he's first one on there.
Sounds fine.
Okay. You, was that a motion? I believe it was.
I believe it was.
Okay.
And I second.
Okay. Motion made and second by John. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Carries, thank you, Arianna. Move to item H4.
Consideration and action on authorizing the city manager to enter into a development and annexation agreement between the City of Copper's Cove and WVW Single Development Group LLC, Series 144, and WBW Investment Solutions LLC, Series 011. Collectively, the developer for property known as Corial County Property IDs 156593, 154944, and 104649, consisting of 3.1, 310.07 acres located along Lutheran Church Road and west of Summers Road in the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction. Bobby Lewis, Development Services Director.
Mayor and Council, since the city council meeting held on November 18, 2025, developers have agreed to remove the provision for city reimbursement of the season transfer costs and agree to all of their previous negotiated requirements of the agreement. City staff has accepted all language changes to the draft development agreement and compiled all exhibits within the attached agreement, representing the final development agreement for this 300-plus acre master plan development. With that, city staff recommends that the city council authorize the city manager to execute the development and annexation agreement between the City of Copper's Cove and WBW Single Development Group LLC, Series 144, and WB, and WBW Investment Solutions LLC, Series 011.
Counsel, questions for Mr. Lewis.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I just want to thank city manager, city staff, and WVW getting back so quick and working out the concerns and issues that we had with this.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, action be taken on this item.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve action item H4.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Mr. Hogg, said by Ms. Hogan. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, we move to reports from staff outside entities, advisory committees and boards. We have the city manager's report from Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So I'm going to go through my report. I'll go quickly again, like I normally do. Interrupt me if you have any questions, concerns about any of the topics that I cover. Starting with Capital Projects Animal Control Facility. That facility continues to move forward at this point. And I'm a little cautious about saying this, but it is supposed to be complete this month. Now, we're in December. So be complete in December and move in in January. Next, we have the Senior Center Facility. That Senior Center Facility is, is moving well. We are still hopeful that we can complete all components within the building by next week with a certificate of occupancy inspection shortly after that. Grand opening will be scheduled for this facility as well as the Senior Center Facility, Animal Control Facility, when those are done. City Park Improvements, those are pretty much completed. A lot of the landscaping and irrigation around City Park Pool Pond has been completed. It looks really nice if you haven't been out there. But go out there this, this weekend or next Tuesday when we'll have our Christmas in Cove Park celebration and event. Municipal Court renovation, unfortunately, that renovation is not moving as well as we continue to hope for. There's a number of items that we have ordered that are not, have not been received, that are on backorder, particularly flooring and, and other fixtures and components. Fire Station Number Three Expansion is moving on as scheduled. And so we expect that facility to, could be complete this month as well, with opening next month. City Events Activities, Department Operations. So we've talked about some of the Parks and Recreation events and operation, activities that are occurring. There's two I want to point out in particular. Police Department is doing Christmas in Cove again. So if you see anything that would support that, by all means, Counsel, I'd appreciate that you supported that as well. That has become a pretty large event that has been a great benefit to our community. The other department operation that's come to my attention is the bylaws that are specifically, that city council specifically approved for Keep Copper's Cove Beautiful. Back in, I believe it was May, city council considered approval of revised bylaws for Keep Copper's Cove Beautiful, which included a new section, which is social media policy. And in that section, it does state that commissioners should remember that their online presence is an extension of KCCB and should reflect the organization's commitment to community engagement and positive impact. There's been a recent concern about that policy. And some public comments on social media have been made about the city asking for a commissioner to resign or to change a post that that commissioner made. Just, just want you to be fully aware that any discussion that did occur was not about removing a post initially. It was eventually made as an offer of trying to help remediate a situation. But it, we simply ask that an individual that represents themselves as a KCCB commissioner, understand that the bylaws that you as a council approved state that they should be representing themselves for the benefit of KCCB as well. So, I wanted to bring that little section to your attention. I, I think overall, the KCCB commissioners do an amazing job and they'll continue to do an amazing job. Social media is, is one of those areas that has a lot of free expression. And we fully do encourage that. And, but as a representative in the organization, we bear that responsibility also for the bylaws specifically that council has approved. And we need to follow those, so. Next, we do have emergency notifications and preparations. Unfortunately, we had to send out a message to our community about Code Red or On Solve, which is the emergency notification system that we utilize as part of Central Texas Council of Governments. We are in partner with them. And there was a concern that came out regionally that there may have been some type of cyber security incident with Code Red and On Solve. And we just encourage those who are registered with Code Red and On Solve that they go in and change their password at a very minimum. It does not appear that there have been any issues or concerns in our region specifically. So this is more of a nationwide type of issue. City Council Strategic Planning Retreat. Mayor and Council, I just want to say thank you for the engagement that we had during that retreat. We, I will be bringing back the direction that council provided during that retreat to slightly revise our vision and our mission statement and to bring back the strategic goals and objectives discussed during that retreat. And so you'll have an opportunity to review those, provide additional clarification or revisions on those goals and objectives, and then an opportunity to adopt it so that we can begin focusing on those goals and objectives in the next few years. Grant status, not a whole lot to report. The fact that the federal government was shut down for some time. We are dealing with kind of a backlog of reporting requirements. We've continued to do our reporting as required by the grants, but now those representatives for those granting agencies are back to work and they're reviewing them. And a number of them have asked us to make revisions to some of those things. So we're trying to catch back up with the reporting cycle and will hopefully continue that process. Beyond that, Mayor, that concludes my report. And I'll take any questions or concerns from the council.
Counsel, any questions for Ryan? Okay, thank you, Ryan. We move to item J, items for future agendas.
Nothing for me, Mr. Mayor.
Nothing for me, sir.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
I have nothing, sir.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, I don't have anything for a future agenda, but I do have something that I would like to announce for future that I forgot to mention for, at, during the announcements, if I may.
Sure.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation will be having their breakfast with Santa at the Civic Center, December 13, eight to 10:30 a.m. Adaptive Cookies with Santa at the Civic Center, December 13, 6 to 8 p.m. And don't forget about the magical mailbox that's located at the Civic Center for letters, letters to Santa going all the way till December 12. Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
All right. Jake?
No items for a future agenda.
All right. There is no executive session for tonight, so the time is 6:57. We stand adjourned. Want to wish everyone Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.